Sims?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
And Volin is not here yet.
Okay, thank you, and we'll begin with a land and labor acknowledgement for the city of Bloomington. We recognize that the city of Bloomington sits on native land. The city, as well as city administrative buildings, are on the traditional homelands of the Miami, Delaware, Potawatomi, and Shawnee people, and we acknowledge that they are past, present, and future caretakers of this land. We also acknowledge that much of the economic progress and development in Indiana, and specifically Bloomington, resulted from the unpaid labor and forced servitude of people of color, specifically enslaved African labor. We acknowledge that this land remains home to and a site of gathering and healing for many indigenous and other people of color, and commit to the work necessary to create and promote a more equitable and just Bloomington. We move forward, knowing and acknowledging our rich, complicated, and sometimes painful past, so that we can learn from it and create a true land of opportunity. Moving into the agenda summation for this evening, we have no minutes to approve, so we'll move directly into a section on reports, first council member reports. We then have reports from the mayor and city offices. We will have two this evening, one from the mayor in particular, and then a second on the sidewalk innovation project report from Ms. Kidd. We'll then hear any reports from council committees, and then move into our first period of, first of two periods of public comment. We'll then take up appointments to boards and commissions. Following that will be legislation for second readings and resolutions. There we will take up appropriation ordinance 2302 to specially appropriate funds from the general fund for construction of the Trades District Tech Center and associated construction management services, and resolution 2306 to approve the Project 46 Southern Indiana Regional Climate Alliance. We'll then move into legislation for first readings. Included there are ordinance 2304 to amend Title 20 Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding technical corrections set forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 20. Ordinance 23-05 to amend Title 20 Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding amendments and updates set forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 20.03, 20.05, and 20.07. Ordinance 23-06 to amend Title 20 The Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding amendments and updates set forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 20.04. And ordinance 23.07 to amend Title 20 of the Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding amendments and updates set forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 20.06. We'll then go into our second of two periods of public comment, and we'll take up matters of council schedule before adjournment. So with that, let's move into council member reports. I'll start on my far left, Councilmember Volin.
No report.
Councilmember Smith?
I have a report as liaison from the Plan Commission. I just wanted to give a brief overview of what happened on Monday to the council and the public. Petitions that were tabled were the SP 24-22 Cutters Kirkwood at 115 East Kirkwood Avenue. So that one's tabled for the moment. The next one was a consent agenda, which was SP-09-22, which is Bloomington Redevelopment Commission at 617 North Madison request, petitioner requested an extension of the site plan granted previously, and that was unanimously approved. And there was, you know, no controversy with that. Then the petitions for the evening was, the first one was the one that actually took the most time, which was the PUD, the Robert Shaw North Prow Road Development at 3,500 Block of North Hackberry Street. The petitioner requested that we approve it as the development was designed, which was about 10 years ago, and it had an interruption in it for various reasons, and the pandemic then did that further. In the meantime, the UDO has changed to not prefer bump outs, not eyebrows, not to prefer cul-de-sacs because of connectivity. So the recommendation from Plan Commission was that we shouldn't approve it. Upon questioning by the members of the Plan Commission, it really was a compliance issue mostly because of the change in the regulations, and it really was no practical difference in what was going to happen. It would continue to match the rest of the subdivision, and Mr. Shaw made a very good case, and we had some really great discussions, and it was approved that he could go ahead and build it as it had been designed on an eight-to-one margin. Next one was SP-0923, a development north on North Walnut Core SVA Group, Bloomington Plato, at 2038 now North Walnut Street. It was a major site plan approval to allow the construction of a mixed-use building with 181 dwelling units and 426 bedrooms. It's at the site where, if you remember, the Great Wall it was, and it has some slope issues there. They also requested approval of the affordable housing and sustainable development incentives. They are opting to do a payment in lieu of putting affordable housing there. They were compliant with all issues, so it was approved nine to zero after some discussion. The last one was some technical corrections to the UDO in Chapter Three, in the tables, that will come up before the council, not today, it will be first reading today, and it will come up again, I believe, in one week. And that was approved nine to approve those. And that's the end of my summation. If anybody has any questions, they can ask me or send me a note, and I'll try to clarify those. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims?
No report.
Councilmember Rallo?
Yes, one item. Since at least March 3 of this year, I have, and other members of the council, I understand, have asked the administration, we've requested the total sum the city has spent on annexation, and to date, we have not received an answer. So I'd like to make this request very publicly this evening during our council meeting for the record. We do have the fiduciary responsibility for the city, this body. We should be provided this information. So I would just respectfully ask that the total expenditures that have been committed to the, by the city for annexation be given to the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yeah, thank you. A couple of reports. First of all, I did attend the Middleway House annual luncheon, which was in person again after several years of not occurring during the pandemic period. And it was an appropriate period, month to have it, as usual, because April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and so I wanted to point that out for the community. And there is a theme this year, which is called Drawing Connections: Prevention Demands Equity. And just to quote from the website about this theme, "Drawing connections recognizes that it will take ending all forms of oppression to end sexual harassment, assault, and abuse. It calls on all individuals, communities, organizations, and institutions to change ourselves and the systems surrounding us to build racial equity and respect." So that really resonated with me, especially in light of the diversity, equity, and inclusion training that we did last year. And I also wanted to invite you, the community, to the Sexual Assault Awareness Month Walk that Middleway House is sponsoring. It'll take place on Saturday, April 15, starting at 11:00 a.m. at Waldron Hill Buskirk Park, or Third Street Park, as it's better known, between, it's the little park behind the police station between Walnut and Lincoln. And you can find out more at middlewayhouse.org. Now, on a different topic, although one also about equity and justice, I just want to shout out to two of my newest heroes. As you probably heard, on April 6, just two days after the 55th anniversary of the murder of Martin Luther King Jr. in Memphis, the Republican-controlled state legislature of the state of Tennessee expelled two of its members, two young black activist members, Justin Jones, who represented a district in Nashville, and Justin J. Pearson from Memphis. These young men, and the courage that they've shown, and the leadership they've shown, they're very new to the State House in Tennessee, I find admirable, and I am very disturbed by this racist action of the Tennessee Legislature. I can imagine such a thing could happen in Indiana, and want to say to our representatives, we've got your back, or at least I do. I would be out there with you. Because the issue that they were protesting in the well of the State House was gun control. Yet another mass shooting, this time in Nashville, prompted their demonstration last week. Luckily, more grassroots democracy prevailed, or lower-level democracy at least. The Nashville Metropolitan Council unanimously reinstated Justin Jones on Monday. The Shelby County Commission unanimously reinstated Justin J. Pearson today. And I just want to quote from Representative Pearson today. He said, "Nashville thought that they could silence democracy, but they didn't know the Shelby County Commission. So the message for all the people in Nashville who decided to expel us, you can't expel hope, you can't expel love, you can't expel our voice, and you sure can't expel our fight. We look forward to continuing to fight, continuing to advocate, until justice rolls down like water and righteousness like an ever-flowing stream. Let's get back to work." And I can't do his eloquence justice. He's very reminiscent of Martin Luther King in the way he talks. He has studied theology and is very good at using imagery to make his point. And so the point here is that we need to keep speaking up about the murder of our children and our community members, because everybody can access a gun. There are too many guns out there. There are too few checks on who can get guns. Far too often underage people can access guns, people with mental health issues can access guns, and it's a problem that we need to keep speaking out about, even if people who are in the pocket of the NRA are in our state legislature, which actually we saw today here in Indiana. So that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg?
No report, thank you.
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
No report, thank you.
Councilmember Flaherty?
No report, thanks.
Thank you. And I'll just finish up. I'd like to acknowledge some very good work done by the Alternative Public Safety Outreach Special Committee. This is a subset of the Community Advisory and Public Safety Commission, and this group coordinated a town hall of sorts in a listening session around issues of public safety under the theme of "Safety for All at the expense of None." This event was held Monday, Tuesday, and several council members, Councilmember Sims and Councilmember Piedmont Smith were in attendance as well. And I appreciated the hard work that went into planning that, and also the productive discussions that were co-led by C-GAM representatives as well. So I just want to acknowledge their efforts in that part. So, thank you. That takes us to reports from the mayor and city offices. I'll note that we have two sets of reports tonight that may well extend beyond 20 minutes, so we may want to be prepared for that. So Mayor Hamilton, if you would please start us off.
Thank you very much. It's nice to be here, Mayor Hamilton, with you tonight. I know you have a busy agenda. Just wanted to provide brief comments on several items, some on, some not, on the agenda tonight. First and most substantively, Councilmember Rallo, appreciate your teeing that up. I did want to talk about annexation costs tonight. And also, we will be sharing a more detailed written report, I believe, in the morning from our legal office. So council has asked, as you indicated, to share more information about annexation, which we want to do, both on the cost and also reflecting some of the public discussion lately. I'll do that tonight, as well as just very brief references to some other topics. So first, on annexation cost, total direct cost to date and overall in the annexation process is $1.33 million, 1.33 million. We estimate that may rise to over 1.5 million with litigation expected. It's really important to note that about half of that total of 1.5, if that's where we end up, results directly from the Indiana General Assembly illegally stopping annexation in 2017 and 2019 actions. In other words, half of that cost has been caused directly by the General Assembly's unlawful actions. Most of the annexation costs reflect an extremely detailed fiscal plans that are done and renewed by experts for the public review, far beyond legal requirements, but done with a parcel-by-parcel fiscal impact and very detailed plans that let the administration, city council, and the public thoroughly vet the proposed annexation. And last point on cost, I just want to note that any halting and restarting or resetting of the current annexation process will not save money, it will cost money. Any renewal or restarting or resetting will require new or updated fiscal plans, which are the largest expense of annexation, substantially adding to any cost of future annexation. Again, we'll share the details of that with your council tomorrow morning. Just very briefly, also discussions of the size of annexation. I just, you know much of this, but the proposed annexation is sized because nearly 20 years have now passed since there's been any annexation in the city, 20 years. So our boundaries no longer correspond to the extent of our community. I'll note also that when we start an annexation process, it is advisable to start with the largest potentially advisable map, because the process cannot increase the size of an annexation. The public process can only trim the size of annexation. So indeed, that's exactly what happened. As you know, the city council considered annexation and reduced the proposed size by nearly a fifth, almost 20%, during that public process that we had. Also, just quickly, as you know, many of the areas proposed for annexation have been identified for decades as areas to be annexed, literally long identified on maps as, quote, "areas intended for annexation." And just to remind us as well, in 1990, 15% of the county's urbanized area was not in the city, 15% in 1990. Today, it's nearly double that, with 27% of the urbanized area defined by the census outside city boundaries. The planned annexations will leave approximately 12% of urbanized areas outside the city limits of Bloomington. And of course, as you know also well, thousands of the current or prior property owners explicitly agreed to be annexed into the city in exchange for city sewer service legally waiving their rights to remonstrate. Last, on the annexation, I just want to point, we also believe we have a responsibility as a city to defend our city against unconstitutional actions by the state legislature, an aggressive state legislature that undermined our ability to serve residents. The Supreme Court of Indiana ruled that the 2017 action by the state legislature was unlawful, illegal, unconstitutional, halting our annexation. We are now also asking the courts to stop the state from retroactively voiding contracts that the city and landlords, landowners voluntarily entered into, and thus indirectly trying to achieve what the state was not, the state Supreme Court prohibited directly. We do not sue the state lightly, but both of the annexation cases involve fundamental principles of constitutional law that we need to protect if we are able to operate effectively and plan confidently for our future. And maybe most important, the cost of not completing annexation is serious. Boundaries could be frozen for the foreseeable future, a major detriment to our community. Future voluntary annexation requires significant contiguity with current boundaries. You can't leapfrog, you can't spaghetti annex through thin lines anymore. Great swathes of the contiguous areas of the city have already received the primary city benefit of sewer and water service that allow that urban development, and could be absolute barriers to future voluntary annexation that we all would want. We even learned lately some other impacts. For example, rural transit, we now know, is facing substantial negative federal funding implications as its service area is increasingly non-rural. So I just raised that. Thank you for asking about annexation. Again, we'll provide more detail. And lastly, just briefly, I want to mention a couple things. You will be considering the Project 46 resolution tonight. I know Alex Crowley will be here to answer questions about that. If you have questions about that now, I'm happy to answer them here. We are very excited about this regional, cross-sector, bipartisan, urban-rural coalition to address climate change together. It's an emergency we face. There are also extraordinary opportunities, and we look forward to working with our colleagues in Monroe, Brown, and Bartholomew Counties for that, and I hope you will support that resolution later. We've also shared some information with you recently about the Trades District Building Project and Tiff versus Creed. I'm happy to answer questions about that now, if you like, to me, and we'll have other folks, of course, with the substantive presentation, and also shared some information about fire department operations. Happy to take questions. I also know you're ready. You will be receiving an exciting and terrific presentation by Innovation Director about our sidewalks as soon as we finish here. But thank you, and happy to answer any questions you have on any of those topics.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo?
Thank you, Mayor Hamilton. Did you say 1.33 million?
1.33 million.
So this doesn't seem to square with a story that came out in the Herald-Times on March 9 of 2022, that was 13 months ago, which broke down the expenses for annexation in totaling over 1.4 million dollars at that time. And it's itemized in the paper.
We'll be happy to provide the detail. I can't defend, I can't tell you exactly what the Herald-Times wrote 14 months ago, but we're confident these are the expenditures for annexation.
Have you spent any money in the last 13 months?
I'm sure we've spent some money in the last 13 months.
Okay, that's might be in addition to the 1.4 million. So you...
We'll be providing the detail again. I'm not here to defend the Herald-Times column or reporting, but that's what we're going to be sharing with you tomorrow.
I think they received the information from you, but thank you.
On annexation or on, okay, go ahead.
What is the status of our case in the courts? When can we expect to hear, I mean, do we know where it is? When's it going to be the next ruling?
There are two cases, and if we get too deep into this, I'm sure we can ask our corporate counsel to share, but we have, we have two cases. Did she smile and say yes? Okay, okay. We have the case that is kind of a more traditional annexation case on areas 1A and 1B that are in front of the court. We've gone through some preliminary decisions that went in our favor. There's an interlocutory, intermediary appeal that's been sought that we don't think will be granted. We're opposed to it, which would mean the trial could begin this year. There is a tentative date set for that later in the year. We can't be sure exactly when things will happen. That trial would be a short few days, maybe something like that.
Right.
And then how long the court takes to decide, I don't know.
Well, I guess I'm really interested in the question of the 2019 law that...
So that's case number two. In that case, we have filed a summary judgment motion. That case doesn't have a lot of factual underlying questions about it. It's primarily a legal question, is that constitutional? We have filed our summary judgment motion, which is an extensive argument of that. We have not gotten the response yet. It'll be in a few weeks, months, I think, I don't know. And then the court will decide exactly how that'll proceed, but that will mostly be a summary judgment motion trial, probably.
Well, it seems to me that the second case affects the first. Like if summary judgment, if the city prevails, then 1A and 1B will have a majority of sewer waivers that count, last I remember, that the two of the seven areas that had, that met, like if all the sewer waivers were counted.
Right.
There were only two areas that were not 1A and 1B.
Right.
So why would they even be proceeding on the first case when the second case is pending?
Short answer to that is, if you'll recall, the constitutional determination from the Supreme Court took about three and a half years ultimately to get because of appeals and the schedules of that. So while any determination could be positive, if it's appealed, it's a very long time horizon, potentially. And our view is it's much better to get this decision on the major errors as quickly as we can. We're all waiting to know how to plan, so.
But it's possible that, when did we, when did we, the city file in the 2019 case?
We filed in March, I think, late March, late February, early March of this year. We filed the summary judgment motion in the last couple months.
But it's possible that this issue could go well into the next term. It's not going to be resolved this year.
The 2019 law issue could absolutely take substantial time.
Okay.
Because any decision could easily end up in the Supreme Court of Indiana, which took us quite a while to get to before.
So you think that 1A and 1B, the case involving them, could be resolved as early as this year?
Yes.
And if so, then the city would simply, I mean, it's not going to wait for the other areas to be determined.
Correct.
They're going to simply annex those areas.
Correct.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? If not, I have one related to annexation. Okay, seeing none. Thank you for your comments, Mayor. On annexation, 1.33 million, I'm interested in what's included in that. I assume that includes things like outside counsel that we've had related to annexation and so forth. Does it also include our staff hours? Does it, what's included, what's not in that figure?
Right. The 1.33 million is all the expenditures we have made. They are primarily of two sorts. One is for fiscal advice and counsel and work product, doing the fiscal analysis, doing the parcel-by-parcel analysis, and revising that, as we had to do after the 2019 law and 2017 action of the state. One. Second is outside legal counsel, who've been critical. This is a very complicated and technical area of the law, and they've helped us with that. It does not include our own attorney's time. It does include other things like postage. There's a lot of mailing that we had to do to every parcel owner and that kind of thing. But it does not include the cost of our own attorney's time, which have done a fantastic job in this, as they do in most of our litigation.
Thank you. Additional questions for the mayor? Seeing none? Oh, sorry. Councilmember Volin?
I was hoping that you would be available later for, you know, certain issues that are on the agenda, but the primary concern I have is about getting accounting info for, I've been asking about the Creed and the Tiff, and you mentioned that in your talk. Is there going to be someone from the Controller's Office present tonight to answer fiscal questions regarding the Trades District Building and the Creed?
Yes. Deputy Controller Cheryl Gililand will be available for those questions. I'm also happy to answer any questions you have, generally in a policy nature.
Right, because we have to wait till that point comes up to talk about it. But yeah, I just, I just, and while I'm in receipt of an email from you that I just read, I'd like you to answer it publicly. In the course of trying to establish, you know, whether or not the Tiff would be a better source of revenue for that, I found that it was very difficult to find anywhere on the city site how much money was in the Tiff, but more specifically, what it was spent on. And so one thing that I'd like to know is, can you and your staff prepare? I mean, the Tiff has been a big deal, with a lot of money going through it for a lot of years, and it's hard to say, well, what have we really spent it on? How can we break it down? What big, because mostly it's large dollars and few... What big proj, because mostly it's large dollars and few dispersments to big projects.
Right.
So can you talk about those projects at all? And if not, can we have that be a regular part of the budget from now on? Because the RDC is not exactly a body that regularly reports to us, and it's responsible for a lot of money.
Yeah, I think those are really well-taken. Of course, the RDC does produce an annual report that gives its balances to end of the year. It's coming out shortly for 2022, which will show about 26 million, as I think I mentioned the 2021 report shows about 22 million in balance. But as you indicate, and of course, every project the RDC does, every investment they make is itemized in a meeting, and it's in the minutes, but as you indicate, it is difficult, if one were to say...
To summarize it.
What has the RDC invested in over the last 10 years, or five, or 15? That's not a list that we have.
Well, I would go better and say, with respect to, say, Hopewell or any other project you're doing.
Right.
It's a multi-year project.
Right.
And it's hard to really tell where the money's going, what it was for, how much we spent over time. Most, many of the big, most of the big projects that the city is doing are not done in one year. So I don't want to have to scrape every set of agendas of the RDC to figure out where money is going.
I hear you.
And so when, when can you have the staff repair report like that?
Yeah, I think, and first, I also just want to note that we, of course, appoint the members of the RDC, the council in the city, and those are our representatives who oversee all this, every meeting on our behalfs. But I totally, I do agree, I think we're trying to put together that kind of historical summary. It's never been done, as far as I know. Things like $34 million spent on Switchyard Park, you know, we've talked about that, but having that on a list of $5 million spent on the mill and down the line. So I think while we may have talked about them individually, I'm happy to try to put that together. I think it'll take us a few weeks to scrub it and make sure we have that list, but happy to share.
Well, for what it's worth, I did receive a data dump from New World, our accounting system.
Yeah.
From a staff member in the Controls Office. That was 79 pages of budget data.
Every expenditure.
It was every transaction, but it was 79 pages over five years.
Right.
And that is almost as hard to process. So what we're looking for is somewhere in between.
Yeah.
But it's not normally a part of the budget because the money is spent outside the normal budget process. So it's really confusing, and it's something that even I haven't thought about asking until now, but this project brought it forward, so I would like to ask you to do that and to not wait until the budget process, but to do it as soon as possible.
We'll be happy to try to share some of that summary. I mean, again, we can, we can probably remember what the major items are, you know, Switchyard Park, Trades District, including the mill, Hopewell purchases and development there. It's also used for substantial matches of federal infrastructure, 17th Street, Third Street projects that we use TIF money to leverage federal money, but happy to try to get a comprehensible, one- or two-page summary of those projects.
Well, with all due respect, you can probably remember it because you work with them all the time, but I, when looking at that budget document, I could, I did not remember that West 17th Street was something we funded. It's not easy to remember. It's not easy to find on the website because it doesn't exist, and it should exist. So, you know, it should exist because we shouldn't be expected to remember something that momentous. We should have the detail. I should know, I'll be able to say that 34 million was spent on X or Y, so please.
Yeah.
As soon as you can. Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you. We are at time for, at our time limit for this section. I'd rather not interrupt Ms. Kidd mid-report. Are there additional questions for the mayor before? Okay, seeing none, I'm guessing you may get some follow-up via email or phone.
Happy to do that. Thanks very much.
Let's, may I have a motion, actually, to extend this section of the agenda to 7:20? Would that be reasonable?
Yes, I move that we extend the mayor and public offices portion of the agenda to 7:25.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
I hear multiple seconds. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The ayes have that. Ms. Kidd, welcome.
Thank you. Happy to be here. For the record, my name's Dave Taked. I'm the Innovation Director for the City of Bloomington, and I served as the Innovation Lead for this years-long project. I want to start by thanking council for your interest and your participation in this project. For example, Susan Sandberg attended a public engagement meeting in person. Councilmember Volan and Rosenbarger tested out a prototype of one of the ideas, and then President Scambalieri and Rosenbarger signed up for some of the online meetings that we had. So I really appreciate your involvement in the project. Tonight, I will provide a little bit of context about the project and our process, and I'll present the ranked ideas and the recommendations for each one. We'll review the next steps, and then I'll open it up for questions. I want to recognize the hard work of our team. We had representatives from multiple leadership levels of seven city departments, plus Bloomington, City of Bloomington Utilities, plus Bloomington Transit, and I want to give a special shout out to Clarence Boon of Parks and Nathan Herr of Utilities. They completed all the requirements for certification and innovation training. Coaching and training was provided by Tim Fife with a grant from Bloomberg Philanthropies' Center for Public Innovation. We also could not have completed the project without enthusiastic support from multiple divisions of Public Works, the Council for Community Accessibility, and the leadership of Planning, Engineering, Housing and Neighborhood Development, and of course, our mayor. We selected sidewalks as our topic for a number of different reasons, but what it boils down to is that residents said that sidewalks are important to them, and through our many strategic plans, we've told them that it's a priority for us. The innovation method that we used is called human-centered design, and as the name suggests, it centers the people who would be impacted by a change and involves them in the solution-making for the process. We used an innovation method because the solution to the problem was not known. Had we known the solution, it would have been a project management exercise. So not every problem is suited to an innovation framework, but this one was. The starting point was to define the problem, to solve, and then deeply understand the context. To understand the context, we conducted 14 resident interviews and observed 10 residents, not in a creepy way, on their journey by sidewalk. We reviewed all of the city's strategic planning and meeting documents that pertain to sidewalks, and we analyzed the data from six years of our U reports. The research pointed to a number of different directions deserving a focus, but ultimately, the voice of the residents was clear. They just want to be able to get where they're going by sidewalk without having to step into traffic. So what's getting in the way? Sidewalks in poor condition, most of which use historic pavers. Additionally, residents interviewed were unclear about who's responsible for maintaining the pavement service, surface. Encroachment by trees, hedges, low-hanging branches. Here again, some residents weren't clear that even trimming hedges or clearing away the branches was their responsibility. The city maintains some of these things for pathways and multi-use trails, which look like sidewalks to residents. So there's some confusion there. Rough transitions between sidewalks and driveways and alley entrances, and different things blocking the sidewalk like trash and recycling bins and scooters. And finally, we heard of gaps in the sidewalk network, such as sidewalks ending abruptly without signage to motorists that pedestrians are getting ready to enter the roadway. So what's the impact of these barriers in human terms? During interviews with residents, we heard stories like the one of a young woman in a wheelchair who toppled over because of a rough transition, like the one you see in the picture here. She lay on the sidewalk until someone could help her. We heard things like, "I just don't go down Washington Street on trash day." And we heard many, many stories of people having to step into traffic and worry about being seen by cars for all of the reasons in the picture here. So what do we do about it? We used four different methods to generate solutions, and as much as possible, we tried to go to where the residents were. We did this in collaboration with community members, which resulted in 107 unique ideas. The innovation team used our framework to whittle that group down to a much smaller, manageable set of 11 ideas, and then we held two virtual meetings where participants rated those ideas based on the idea's ability to impact the goal of all sidewalks always navigable for everyone, and their degree of confidence that the idea could actually be practically implemented. These are the seven ideas with the highest rankings. It's a little bit difficult to read the titles here, but don't worry about that because I'm getting ready to go into the details on each one of these. The horizontal x-axis represents the combined degree of support for these options. The highest-rated item is quarterly communications to residents that would inform and remind them of their seasonal responsibilities and encourage them to take action. I mentioned earlier that we heard from many folks that they're confused about who is supposed to do what. One thing we can do pretty easily is to send seasonal updates using our various media channels. This idea had broad support from residents and our internal departments like Planning, Engineering, Utilities, and Hand, who also have information that they want to send seasonally in a bundle. There's also the possibility of gamifying the responsibility with challenges that invite residents to clean and decorate their sidewalk according to a theme and send us pictures to post to our social media. We think this idea is a just-do-it. The second highest-rated item is to explore more funding sources for sidewalks. This is kind of a no-brainer. We can do more with more funding. This idea is also a requirement of some of the other recommendations, but most notably the last item for the city to maintain all sidewalk surfaces that we'll talk about in a bit. Getting new funding for sidewalks has become more attainable with federal funding for infrastructure. There are vendors who manage and help find grants for cities, and we've been in contact with one of those. We also have some grant management positions that were approved in the last budget. There's also room to explore whether existing revenue from the local income tax or scooter revenue might be appropriate uses for sidewalk maintenance. So the recommendation here is to keep working with the administration on how existing funds could be used and work with a grant management vendor until we have that capacity in-house. The third idea is to find alternatives for commemorating our historic sidewalks. These stretches of sidewalk make up the highest percent of our poor-quality sidewalks and are challenging and more expensive to repair. Our Planning and Public Works Departments and our passionate historic preservationist, Gloria Colom, have been working with the Preservation Commission for years on alternatives, and there's some recent examples that both look nice and are easier for strolling and rolling. Because of the complexity of getting agreement on acceptable alternatives, the recommendation here is to focus on getting these segments to a fair condition while we continue the effort to find even more navigable solutions. The fourth idea is to address sidewalk-related issues more swiftly and responsively by having a single point of contact to manage all things sidewalk. The scope of this position could be defined by a sidewalk committee that was recently formed by Public Works Director Adam Wasen. Establishing this position would also work well and may even be a requirement for moving forward with some of the other ideas. Our recommendation here is to establish this new position in the 2024 budget cycle. The fifth idea is the one that we were able to prototype. The idea is to add some kind of marker at the optimal location for where trash and recycling bins should be located. These are represented by the bright blue dots that you see here, and the promotional campaign would be simply to put it on the dot. Residents participating in the prototype and city staff alike thought the idea had promise. However, implementation is surprisingly complex because of all the things that need to be considered to determine that optimal location so that it doesn't block the sidewalk. The complexity is not insurmountable, but more testing is needed. We believe that the previous four ideas and the next two are higher priorities, so our recommendation for this idea is to move beyond the prototype and pilot the idea in 2025. The next-to-last idea, the sixth idea, we refer to this as the parking enforcement model. This came from the reality that we have defined resident sidewalk responsibilities, but we enforce them inconsistently because of staffing capacity. So residents remain uninformed and don't take action even if they know what to do because they know that there's a good chance that there won't be any repercussions. So the idea would work like this. City staff members, already working in every part of town, so think Hand Inspectors or Brighton B. Town Crews, would log infractions in U Report. The enforcer, possibly the single point of contact mentioned in solution number four, would contact the property owner directly by phone or email, and then follow up with a formal letter. They would let them know what is out of compliance, any known resources that could help them get into compliance, and a reasonable timeframe to fix it. The enforcer would also specify that if the issue is not fixed by the requested due date, that the city will fix the issue and charge the property owner. Equity concerns, of course, would be baked into this option. The idea also had broad support and enthusiasm for two reasons. Number one, in the end, the issue is fixed, either by the property owner or by the city. The idea could work well, number two, the idea could work well in tandem with any of the other ideas presented. Our recommendation is that a pilot later this year or early next year would start with sidewalks adjacent to commercial properties. A big thanks to Director Wasen for his input on the notification process here. Which brings us to our last item, shifting responsibility for maintaining all sidewalk surfaces to the city. This idea had low support in the ranking process because the financial barrier was considered to be too high. There was discussion, however, that people would have ranked this idea much higher if they were confident that the money were there. I'd like to note that of all the ideas, this is the only one that occurred in every single solution generation session. And we have some late-breaking news about it. Some recent research revealed a few companies that are trialing alternative materials like recycled hard plastics and recycled rubber that perform as good or better than concrete in climates like ours for a lower cost over the lifetime of the material. I'm excited to announce that we'll begin the process of exploring the possibility of using alternative materials starting next month. In May, an Indiana-based vendor will meet with representatives from multiple departments to answer their questions about the material and determine if our terrain is suitable to their product. If so, we'll identify a pilot area. An interesting aspect of this particular vendor's product is that it's made from recycled plastics that could be sourced from our own community, so we could be providing the source material for our own sidewalks. We also continue to look for other materials. There's a lot of buzz in the innovation world about cementless concrete that could aid in carbon capture, as one example. Here again, in this chart, the horizontal x-axis represents the combined degree of support for the solution options. You can see that some of these options had net zero or negative support. I won't go into detail about these options because our recommendation for all of them is the same, to not move forward because of their very low support. Our next steps are listed here. I've mentioned them while we're going through the recommendations, so I won't repeat them, but please note that each item has an owner, that is, your point of contact for more information, and a target. and a target start date. This has been a lot of information and a lot of work. Thank you for your attention. You can access the project page at the URL that's listed there, and I'd like to open it up for questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Volan and Rallo.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kidd, for an excellent presentation, very interesting. I have two questions. One of them is, can alternative materials be used to help solve the problem of the historic stone sidewalks? Can they be, can there be like a clear epoxy that goes over it or some, you know, is there some material that will allow those sidewalks to be smooth but still retain their character?
I don't know the answer to that. That would be a great question for Gloria Colom, the historic preservationist. But it does seem like they're, they are experimenting with alternatives already. There's a sidewalk that's over near Fairview School that now looks much better and it's also much smoother. It's not completely smooth like concrete, but...
And that's a historic sidewalk?
It is. Mm-hmm.
Okay. That sounds great. I'll go see it.
Yeah.
The other question was, can you give us an example? I mean, yes, I was one of the people who helped experiment with where to put trash cans. I've started putting my can out differently now because of it, but what's an example of the complexity of the blue dot problem? In other words, give us a one or two ideas of why this is a complex problem.
Right. So if you go on West Kirkwood, there are houses that have a teeny-tiny front yard, one of the narrow, older sidewalks, and they butt up against a very busy street. So the cans can't be put in the street. Their yard may be on a slope or too small to place a can there, and so they have to, at least right now, they have to put it in the sidewalk. And so trying to figure out what is the optimal location for that. There are also places, if we think about putting markers on the ground, we have public land, that is the roadway, and then we have private land, which are people's yards and in some cases, the side path that's in front of that. So negotiating with people, are you okay with the aesthetics of this, is a little bit challenging. And then I mentioned Washington Street. That's an example of the optimal location would be to place it in the yard, but there's also a lot of on-street parking, just like your street. So we would have to indicate on the curb, please don't park here, so that we can get to the cans. There are just a lot of different configurations of the house relative to the sidewalk, relative to the street. If there is, if there is a short wall also.
I appreciate all of that. I just want to follow up with one question, which is, it's just, it's the last part.
We are at time, but go ahead.
Just the last part is, can we put blue dots out in places where there's no controversy? And just say, if you have a blue dot, use it.
Yeah, that's something to consider.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Rallo.
Thanks. Thanks, Ms. Kidd, for the report. When you, I'm curious about the support, the relative support, high support, low support. The denominator's 20. Is that the, is that the number of participants?
No, we had, I think, 35 in total. There are some people who registered in at neutral, so it didn't, it didn't count.
But all of them are, all of them seem to be 20. So 10 out of 20, 6 out of 20, 14 out of 20.
Out of 20, right.
Right. So what does 20 represent?
I'm sorry. Yeah, you're, you're right. We had...
Those are the participants.
The combined of the, of the two meetings was 20.
I, I wonder if the sample size is too small, frankly. I mean, when we're talking about, and, and some of these are employees of the city? Or they...
Yes.
Okay, so you've got employees of the city that make up maybe half the number. Of course, you know, they, they may have a certain bias. So I would say this needs to be done in a much larger scale in order to have any real meaning, to me at least. Not that these aren't good ideas. I mean, there are good ideas here. But just one comment, I, I think that we've got a frozen council sidewalk budget. It was not raised last year despite requests. And so I'll take the opportunity right now to say, given the cost increases, we need a larger sidewalk budget if we're going to have more sidewalks. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
We are at time for, we are at extended time, actually, for this section. Thank you for including the, I'll note that the website link was included in the slide deck, so for those wanting to dig into the project a little deeper, and I'm sure we can be in touch with you...
Absolutely.
With questions.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Kidd. That takes us to reports from council committees. Are there any reports from council committees? Seeing none, that takes us to our first period of public comment. May I see a show of hands in chambers as to how many would like to make a public comment? I'm seeing one. Mr. Two, Mr. Lucas, could you extend the invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes, there are members of the public that would like to speak. Please let us know by using the raise hand feature in Zoom. You can find that in your control bar under the reactions button or the more button. You can also send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak.
Okay. And if you would, in chambers, please go ahead and approach the podium, and please sign in if you would. So, and Mr. Lucas, do we have takers?
Just one at the moment.
Okay. If you would, please sign in and then state your name for the record.
Okay, thanks. My name is Greg...
And you'll have five minutes.
Sorry. My name is Greg Alexander. Back in 2019, two years before you all put me on the Traffic Commission, I saw in the newspaper that a man was arrested for walking in the street on Bloomfield Road. I happen to know the sidewalk was closed on both sides of the street. He had no choice but to walk in the road. In my mind, I'd received a complaint from that man. From the moment I read about it, I dropped everything I was supposed to do today, and I crafted a polite but emotionally wrenching email to the engineer who supervised the design of the detour, attempting to personify the victim of this institutional disregard. I wrote and delivered a speech for the city council portraying it as a correctable systemic injustice. I tracked down the maintenance of traffic plan from Public Works, and I went and I inspected, and I took photos, and I wrote a polite but extremely critical report, which I sent to the staff member whose job I had just performed. I do an incredible job of receiving complaints and acting on them. I'm superlative at it. I'm dedicated to it. Every moment I'm outside, I'm looking for people who are struggling with transportation. For Councilmember Rallo to say in as many words that I'm unable to perform that duty is personally insulting and absurdly counterfactual. I receive complaints from Elm Heights residents. For example, I think complaints about at-water are extremely important.
Is it?
Yes.
And you're going to be given extended time, I think, to, to comment, so I would think...
It's on, it would come up under boards and commissions?
Yeah, but there's no public comment then.
But it's related to the motion on, it's on the agenda.
I, I'm going to let you go ahead and finish your comments.
It's a short speech anyways.
So could we put the timer back up, please? And reset the game clock to whatever?
Remaining time will suffice.
Okay, thank you.
I do receive complaints from Elm Heights residents. For example, I, I think complaints about at-water are extremely important. They know that I listen to their club. They're just mad that I won't acknowledge that their opinions are more important than everyone else. And I never will because, face it, club politics is not as important as traffic safety, certainly not to me. You know, I have said stupid things on social media for 30 years. I was a pioneer of that. It's so valuable to me. People respond and correct my mistake or even ridicule me for it, and then everyone who saw my stupidity sees the correction as well. I love it, whether I make a friend or an enemy. I learn so much from that process. Well, some people are probably going to speak tonight to draw your attention to some stupid things I said. And really, I only want to respond to one of them. Chuck Livingston has accused me of making factual errors. I love him for doing that. I do. I make mistakes, and I want truth. That's my value. He doesn't have to like me, but we're on the same side at the end of the day. I understand if the council doesn't like me, if you're having an up-and-down vote on whether you want to be associated with me, I anticipate unanimous opposition. But Councilmember Rallo's motion alleges that I can't receive complaints and turn them into recommendations to the council. That's hogwash. You guys know it. If Councilmember Rallo offers no substantive criticism of my conduct as a traffic commissioner, then his criticism is insubstantive. Thanks.
Thank you. Let's go to our Zoom commenter, if we would, please.
Yes, we have Caroline Wilder.
Ms. Wilder, if you would, please confirm your name for the record, and then you'll have five minutes.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, yes, this is Caroline Wilder. Sorry, it's not letting me put on the video, but I just wanted to come in and say, I'm a student from Indiana University. I'm actually attending this meeting for my Intro to American Politics class, and I just kind of wanted to ask you guys, because my project is over civic engagement, and how we as students at IU would be able to kind of get involved with the city of Bloomington, like the city council. Basically, just if we were to have like a civic engagement thing, we want to talk to you, would it be okay for any of our students to even form a committee or group and just kind of come to a city council meeting or hop on Zoom to bring this to your guys' attention?
Just to clarify, Ms. Wilder, this is not a time for back-and-forth discussion, but I'm pretty confident that if you had questions for any member of council, you would be welcome to email or reach out.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was unaware of that. This was kind of a last-minute thing. I was speaking to my professor, so I apologize for the interruption.
That's okay. Thank you, Ms. Wilder.
Thank you.
So, does that, does that conclude your comments? I'll take that as a yes. All right. And then, do we have anyone else on Zoom, just for, as I follow along? And yes, we have additional comments here in chambers? If you could sign in, please?
Absolutely.
And then state your name for the record, and then you'll have five minutes.
Absolutely. Give me Travis. Hello, my name is Travis Washington. I live in Bloomington, Indiana. My goal is to plant over 100 trees April 29, 2023, and I would like to invite all the members of the chamber. My main goal is to bring people together, whether you're Muslim, Jewish, atheist, Buddhist, Christian, or Hindu. My main goal is to show the whole community, people that are Black, Latino, Asian, white, Arab, that we can all get along, whether you're Democrat, Republican, it really doesn't matter. That's why I'm inviting every single city council member here. Is it okay if I pass these up or can I not? Okay, I'll give it to you, because I know, look, I see it on TV. I don't want to get tased today. That's not how I want to go viral. But to me, I'm a big, I love my granny and grandma very much, and they always play Louis Armstrong. It's a wonderful world we live in, and I want to show that even though these hectic times, we can all get along together. And Billy Preston said, nothing from nothing leaves nothing. So I'm trying to build something in this community, and I would love for you aldermen or city council members to please come to this event. Please bring shovels, because I have students, our fraternity, sororities. I'm bringing, inviting police officers, fire departments, and I would really, really love some of you community members to help us plant trees, to show all of us coming together, because that, to me, is so important. Even as a Christian, I've been reading my Bible a lot more. I used to want to be a priest, and even Jesus helps sinners and wash their feet, and we just had Easter. I'm not going to wash anybody's feet here, but I would really love if all of you can bring shovels, bring your family members, bring friends. This is a chance for all of us to come together and say we love each other. I mean, whatever. I'm like ranting on and on, but thank you all for giving me this time. I'm going to hand you this form. Thank you. Have a good one. And my name is Travis Washington. Excuse the, my generation-only types. We don't write anymore.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. So, do we have anyone else on Zoom, Mr. Lucas? And anyone else here in chambers? I'm not seeing any. Okay. Okay, thank you. That concludes our first period of, two periods of public comment. That takes us to appointments to boards and commissions. I know that several, I believe several committees have actually been working on appointments. Are there any appointments from Committee A, Committee B, or Committee C for this evening? Seeing none, is there additional business under appointments to boards and commissions? Yes.
If you'll indulge me for a moment. I want to recall for the council that on March 29, a motion was introduced to remove Luke Swain from the Environmental Commission for non-attendance, but final action on the motion was postponed to tonight's meeting. Thank you. So I know that council staff contacted or tried to contact Mr. Swain for, you know, any feedback he may have, and I believe no response was received.
Mr. Lucas, can you confirm that, I believe?
Yes, that's correct. And I'll just add, I know planning staff has also made several attempts to contact him with, with no success, so.
And so what are our options regarding Mr. Swain's...
Tonight, the council can take back up the motion that was postponed from March 29. This is a motion for his removal. It requires a majority vote, so the council can act on that now.
So I, I do move removal of Luke Swain from the Environmental Commission for non-attendance.
We have a motion and a second. Shall we do a voice vote, or would people prefer roll call?
Are we re-introducing the motion? Are we taking it off the table? I mean, it was postponed.
We're taking it off the table.
Okay, so we're, okay, thank you.
Okay, a voice vote, then? All those in favor of removing Luke Swain, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. And could the council office communicate with Mr. Swain to that effect? Okay, thank you. Is there additional business related to boards and commissions? Seeing none, we'll move to legislation for second readings and resolutions.
Madam Chair, I move that appropriation ordinance 2302 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Clerk, if you will, please read.
Appropriation ordinance 2302 to specially appropriate funds from the General Fund for construction of the Trades District Tech Center and associated construction management services. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance appropriates $3,061,391 from the General Fund to help pay for construction of the Trades District Tech Center and associated construction management services secured by the Dimension Mill.
Madam President, I move that appropriation ordinance 2302 be adopted.
It's been moved and seconded. Thank you. Mr. Fernandez, I, I believe we have you up, or Mr. East, if you would be willing to make us, we don't need the whole presentation again, but I understand you wish to summarize for us.
Yes, ma'am.
And please do sign in. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Pat East. I'm the executive director of the Mill. Thank you, President Scamblerie, and the entire city council for your continued support of the Mill and your thoughtful consideration of this vital appropriation ordinance. I'm joined tonight by John Fernandez, the Mill's lead for the Tech Center and the Trades District Development Initiatives, BDC President Jim Pearl, representing the city's EDA grant co-recipient, and members of our design team at Studio Access. Representatives of the city administration are here also tonight. We don't plan to do a full repeat of last week's presentation unless, of course, the city council wants us to. Rather, I'd just like to summarize some of the key supporting arguments for this appropriation. The new tech center will solidify the Trades District as a major innovation hub for Bloomington's, for the Bloomington region's emerging tech-focused economy. It will accelerate new business startups and growth-stage companies and ultimately create new, good-paying jobs that our citizens need. Bloomington, despite its economic development and entrepreneurial strengths, has underlying weaknesses. Bloomington's tech sector startup is critically important to creating higher-wage opportunities for its residents and future-proofing the city's economic health. Third, Bloomington has several economic development and entrepreneurial assets, but we lack resources focused on tech commercialization and integrated support for post-incubation startups. The tech center will target new and existing resources to mature tech companies that have progressed beyond the incubation phase and have demonstrated commercial viability. Fourth, the project partners from IU Innovation and Commercialization Office and the Ivy Tech, Gale, and Bill Cook Center for Entrepreneurship have committed to deliver in-kind services, in-kind consulting and advisory services. The Mill's successful operating team is well-positioned to provide program development and operational support for the tech center, ensuring that services are economically efficient and complement the Mill's existing entrepreneurial programming. The Mill's successful operating team is well-positioned to provide program development and operational support for the tech center, ensuring that services are economic... Oh, sorry, I already said that part. The time is right for this investment, together with Indiana University's renewed focus on driving regional economic... regional economic development in the transformational Creating Helpful Incentives in Producing Semiconductors in Science Act, the CHIPS Act, related investments in NSWC Crane Westgate, Bloomington's Trades District is poised to become a dynamic hub for collaboration and acceleration for the region's innovation clusters. And finally, leveraging the $3.5 million grant enables the city to build a new $8.5 million LEED certified, or LEED, Silver LEED Class A office building for $5 million. The anticipated job creation, Tech Center employment growth, and new momentum for this project will create the, for the Trades District Development represents a strong return on investment. Finally, for all these reasons, and on behalf of the Mill, the city's redevelopment commission, the BDC, and our project partners, I respectfully ask council to vote yes on this appropriation ordinance. And I think John will, no, I think we're all good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. East. Mr. Fernandez, or, no? Okay, let's come to council for questions, then. Councilmember Volan.
So I understand that there is someone here from the Controller's Office who can address questions about the creed and the TIF. Is that true?
Yes, Cheryl Gilliland here. I can try to answer some questions that you might have.
It says Gilliland, what was her name?
Gilliland. G-I-L-L-I-L-A-N-D.
Oh, Gilliland, okay. Ms. Gilliland, thank you. I wanted to address you appropriately. So I, I'd just like to get a basics of the, I'm trying to understand the question, why didn't the administration choose to take all the money from the TIF? Doing so would have precluded the need to come before us to get approval for creed money. This is something the administration does on the regular. A lot of money goes to the RDC. Why not get all the dollars from the, can you tell us what's in the TIF? Like what, how much, I don't even know where to start. I'm not sure if you can answer my questions. How much money is in the TIF right now? 439.
Well, in terms of TIF, I believe Mayor Hamilton mentioned that it's right around 26 million is our ending balance of December 31st, 2022.
And I understand from the memo that the administration prefers to use all this money for Hopewell. Is that correct, that they're trying to reserve as much money in the TIF for Hopewell as possible?
That is not my understanding at all. It is supporting a number of projects.
Well, I mean, why couldn't it support this project too? Right now, there's $2 million coming from it, but it could have, $5 million could have come from the TIF. There's enough money for it there.
That is not my call, and I really don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
We can have Mayor Hamilton and other administrators answer that question.
Okay, I mean, is there somebody who in the room or on the call who's in a better?
No one, I don't believe, is in the room that can answer that at this point in time.
Okay. Well, I don't know.
I mean, the primary, yeah, the primary dollar amounts does go to Hopewell. I mean, that's because it is such a large project at this point in time.
Okay, do we have any sense of how large a project is? Can we at least get a number of digits as to how much we expect to spend in order to prepare Hopewell for development to the nearest order of magnitude? Is it a $10 million project, $100 million project, a billion-dollar project?
The resolution, the latest resolution that I have viewed is right at 25 million.
Okay, so over how many years do we expect to need to invest $25 million?
That I do not have the answer for at this point, for tonight. We can get that for you. I really don't know how long it's going to take to complete Hopewell.
Okay, well, it's at least more than a one-year project.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. So finally, can you at least give us a sense of what is the typical revenue that comes into the TIF over, say, the past five years, on average, per year? How much revenue is coming into the TIF?
Last year, we had 17 million come in.
Okay, and how much of that is already spoken for in existing bonds and interest payments?
I do not have that answer in front of me, but we can get that for you.
Okay, well, I asked for this at the meeting on April 4th, Tuesday. I sent an email to Mr. Underwood on Wednesday. The only response I got was the memo from the mayor dated yesterday, which was less than 48 hours' notice before our meeting. And so I guess what I'm wondering is, and I'm not sure whether you can answer this to somebody else, when were we going to get that information, and why does the administration not think that that's relevant to a decision like this tonight?
That I do not have the answer for, I'm sorry. We, I will just say that the TIF has a lot of projects going, multiple projects going on. There's a number of commitments, and we, I actually have been working on a list of, just like you requested earlier, where all of our money is going for TIF, and that.
Right.
Lit is not complete yet, but we're working on it.
Well, I mean, it's something I only asked for today, because that was the soonest that I got an answer from anybody. So thank you for your time.
Yes.
Additional questions? If not, I'll take a turn. Ms. Gilliland, I'm reading over the memo from the mayor, and in particular, question two, how can we track the use of former creed funds now residing in the General Fund? And I've read that paragraph probably three or four times now, and it still seems to me that, I'm still not clear on the answer. And so I was wondering if you could comment on that, because it still doesn't sound like those monies will be accounted for separately. Am I right?
We can, we can track the money in the General Fund? That's no problem. Is that, is that your question, wanting to know if we can track the funds?
So when you come to us for an appropriation, will you be able to tell us exactly how much of that money came from a creed fund, and how, exactly how much of that money came from elsewhere in the General Fund? Will you be able to tell us that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Additional questions? Councilmember Volan.
I'm referring also to that memo from yesterday. While the administration says that they recognize and share council's interest in ensuring visibility to the ongoing use of creed funds and proposed layers of transparency, in the following questions, the mayor writes that they, that the administration does not feel it prudent further to restrict the use of those funds, and they say he says it twice. He doesn't believe that the money should be restricted to the geographic area of the creed. I mean, I feel like I'm asking the mayor a question, and the mayor's not here, and this is the question I wanted to have asked him before, but he should be here during this moment to talk about it. So I'm frustrated, and I wish that you could give me a useful answer, Ms. Gilliland, but I know you can't. So I'm going to ask the question to the person who's not here. If you want to answer it, you can, but I know you don't have an answer.
Mr. Crowley?
Let me see if I can answer that one. So Alex Crowley, Director of Economic Sustainable Development. So, you know, I think, I believe you met with the mayor, and I believe in the course of that discussion, maybe it was unclear at the time, and maybe you have a better understanding, but I wanted to just clarify that for the whole council of how the money is raised, and where it would go otherwise, and therefore, you know, why it benefits the entire city, right? So unlike a business improvement district, where you have businesses paying into a fund and then expecting the benefit of that fund to accrue back to them, in the case of a creed, these are monies that we would have not gotten. They would have gone to the state, they could have been spent in Lake County. We never would have seen them. So for us, it's just a net gain. It's a bonus back. But just because it happens to come from a geographic district originally, doesn't mean that somehow it has to return to that, you know, once it's been kind of retired as a district. So we really should be thinking about creeds, especially now that the districts have retired, as being benefits to the whole city, benefits we would have not ever gotten had it actually not been for Mayor Fernandez, who established the first creed. So that, I just want to make sure everybody understands that dynamic. It's not the kind of, you know, a business is not paid into it, a business has passed state revenues out, and we've actually gotten them back. And now that the districts are gone, then the geographic boundary generally, you know, can, can be a point of interest, but doesn't exist formally anymore.
I'm not sure where you got your definition here, but I was here in 2004 when the creed was updated. It was the year after it was introduced, and I can assure you that that is not why I voted for it, especially as a representative of the district where the creed exists. I voted for it because I expected the money to be spent in the area where the, that was affected.
And it was during the time of the existence of the creed. The creed is now no longer existing. The BIDAC has disbanded, the creed has terminated, it expired. The boundary is technically no longer there as a district, and so what we have left is a general sense that if there are challenges in the downtown, certainly that's an area that can be invested in, and this is one of those examples. I mean, it's broadly the kind of downtown, but, but really, it's not tied to a geographic footprint as it was when it was established and existed as a district.
When did the district expire?
We had two districts. One expired in 2019, which was the Thompson Creed, and then I believe this one was 2022.
So you mean to tell me that if this, the city establishes a district, and 15 years go by and the money's not spent, that, I mean, isn't it up to the administration to decide how to spend the money?
Well, two things. Money was spent within the district, in both districts, along, you know, significant amounts were spent in both along the way. When that district expires, there are, as noted, Ms. Gilliland noticed, we will be tracking those monies and making sure that we have the ability to understand where that, those monies are spent moving forward. And separately, there is no, the administration itself cannot appropriate that money without city council, just like tonight, would be through an appropriation ordinance. So you have a layer of protection and interest in the way the money is spent.
Mr. Crowley, you know full well that we do not appropriate money. We approve money that's appropriated by the administration. Are you saying that we were the ones who are responsible for saying that money should be spent?
What I'm saying is you have an appropriation ordinance in front of you, authorizing the ability for the money to be spent in such a way. And I think that, and moving forward, that that is.
But listen, there's, what, there were $17 million, there were $10 million in the downtown creed. You're asking for $3 million now for this building. There's $7 million left, which you, the administration has moved out of the separate fund that it says is going to track it, but it believes that it should be able to spend on anything it wants. Well, in that 15 years that it existed, the tax was coming in, was that also true, or was the money only spent in the area where the money was collected? In other words, what did we spend any money on from the downtown creed? Can you even describe, I know, I'm sure you can describe the project, but would you please tell us what project was spent money on?
In the downtown creed?
Yes.
Yes, I can certainly speak from personal experience.
Yes.
One of the first things that I did when I joined the city was a, and in fact, we brought it to the council. You were there.
Yeah.
Remember this, that it was a reimbursement through creed funds to Envisage at the time, they were called Envisage. They were building out their facilities at the showers at the, you know, the Fountain Square Mall.
Right.
They were building out more off the space to grow their manpower. So the creed was used in support of that, to help offset some of those construction costs in exchange for commitment of growth.
If the administration knew, I mean, so there's money that was spent in the district, that's one reason why I voted for it. But the administration knew that the district would expire, why didn't they make more of an effort to spend the money for what its intended purpose was before it expired?
We looked at proposals, and to the extent that they were valid and aligned with the intent of the creed, we did that. That's what we did in 2017. There weren't a lot of proposals that came to our, to our, to the forefront while, at least during my tenure. I can't really speak to what was not done prior to my joining the city. This is a perfect example of the, of an expenditure that is aligned with the original intent of the creed that we feel strongly is a, is a great use of creed funds.
I'll come back to this, but I'm going to defer to another member. Thank you.
Councilmember Sandberg.
For the future reference of what that district was, can you give us an idea of the boundaries of where these dollars that were contributing to the creed, however it was passed through from, you know, state and return? What are the boundaries? What would have been the recipients? What are the geographic boundaries of who should perhaps have been the recipient of this money before it expired and got put back into the General Fund?
So again, there are two creed districts. The exhibit that's up is the Thompson. As I mentioned last time, that's a site-specific creed that was largely, you know, the, around the building that was the Thompson factory building. So, and then this is the downtown creed. You can see it on the map there. So if it's hard to read for you, it's roughly just south of 11th, down to about 2nd, and then from Morton, and then it kind of largely tracks with, what is that, Washington, before it cuts in around the square.
So these dollars were basically collected from the inhabitants of that geographic area? Is that how that worked?
No, what, the sales retail tax that would have gone to the state did go to the state, and then as, because the creed district was established, each year, we were able to recoup a certain amount of money back above the baseline increment that was established when the creed was established. So the, so year one of the creed had a certain amount of, of that tax revenue going up to the state. That was the foundation. Anything above that could come back down to us, above that foundation, up to, and I think for the downtown creed, it was $750,000. So there was an annual cap, so you couldn't get more than 750 a year. And so that started to come back down. We hit the cap relatively soon, in three, four years into the creed, and then we were getting that money down.
So this is primarily sales tax, retail stores that are generating this money?
Sales retail tax, yeah. And payroll too, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Additional, Councilmember Rallo?
Thank you. Do you recall, Mr. Crowley, how much was spent from the downtown creed over its 15-year duration?
I don't, but I can get you that information. I think, Ms. Gilliland.
Do you, could you venture a guess? There's $10 million in the creed right now. Was it, was it millions?
We'd have to do the math. I don't know. Cheryl, do you happen to have that number off the top of your head?
I do not.
I didn't understand.
I do not have that number immediately in front of me, but we can provide that to council.
Is that a question?
Thank you.
When?
But I mean, you know, if you want a rough number, I think it's probably in the million-dollar range. If, I mean, we're talking, you know, we can do the math probably pretty quickly to figure out what that cumulative cap looks like, but that's, you know, again, this goes back to 2004, so we have to just sort of tally that up.
Did you, Councilmember Rallo, did, were you finished?
I am finished.
Councilmember Sandberg, then Councilmember Volan.
Were the downtown merchants who were contributing to this creed accrual of money, were they ever consulted as to what kind of things could benefit them throughout the history of this creed before it expired? Now it's back in the General Fund.
So again, to be clear, they were not contributing to the creed. They were, the state was contributing to the creed. And I think, you know, this program was out there, people were aware of it. Certainly, people took advantage of it along the way. We had at least several businesses that I'm in recent memory, but there were a number of them. So people were aware of it. I don't know to what degree. So, so I would say yes. Generally, I can't speak to everybody.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Volan.
Is there a creed report? Is there a report that describes all the money that's ever been spent from the creed? It's clearly not a long list of things that we've spent money from. Does it exist?
There is. I mean, you can run a report out of the accounting system for, you know, which, which we actually did to try to reconcile.
You can do that. We're not in the, normally in the position to run a New World Report.
Right.
Go on, please.
Yeah, so that's possible, and we're happy to get you that information. You know, had we, had we known that that would be a specific question tonight, we would have provided it. Is not all of that information included in our pack of materials from last week, specifically the Exhibit C of Appropriation Ordinance 2302, which was a Resolution 23-01 in front of the BIDAC for its dissolution? There's a list of expenditures, I believe, of what came out of the creed. There's a list of expenditures, I believe, of what came out of the creed over time, specific figures. There are details in the, there are summaries of the different projects, but there is no line itemization for each of those projects. So you can look on that and understand what broadly has, has been spent out of it. But I think you're asking for specifics.
I mean, I'm asking, I feel like incredulous because on April 4th, I wanted to ask somebody these questions. I was told we'd get answers, but there was no one present on April 4th to answer accounting questions. And now I'm being told by the administration, well, we can get you that stuff, but you want the vote now. You want us to vote now on something when we don't have complete information to understand why you made the decisions you made.
So if that was a question, I mean, I think at the last meeting, you asked a very specific question, right? There were two questions, and they were addressed in the memo in response. One question was why the TIF, or why, sorry, why creed over the TIF?
Mm-hmm.
That was question number one.
Right.
And the second question, whether, I think from someone else, was is it possible to track the expenditures of this reverted fund within the general fund? Those are the two questions that were specifically asked.
Okay.
There were no questions asked about this kind of line item detail.
Sure.
So we, I believe, addressed those two questions to hopefully to, you know, general satisfaction in the memo. These are new questions. We're happy to follow up with it, but, you know.
Sure, thank you. No, you've answered my questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Flaherty.
Yeah, just wanted to follow up on the point of information I was requesting, which is looking at page 139, 140 of last week's packet, the resolution that was in front of the Bloomington Industrial Development Advisory Commission. There's a list under one of the whereas clauses, things that list, for instance, Indiana Enterprise Center of Development, including the demolition of Building 1, 1.95 million. That cites various resolutions, council resolutions. Renovation of IEC space by Cook Pharmica for expansion of its manufacturing facilities, et cetera, 4.77 million. There's a list with specific dollar figures for a variety of projects over time that came from funds collected in the creed districts. Is that exhaustive? Is that?
Yeah, that's a, that's a, you know, I'm glad you pointed it out. That's a summary of sort of high-level project expenditures. And underlying that, you know, is a New World System Report, which is our accounting system, that will detail the sub portions of those that roll up into those dollar amounts. We just don't have that available right now.
Right. But in terms of the high level, the projects that creed revenues were spent on over the past 20 years, is that an exhaustive list that's all covered there? That was my assumption. I'm just asking for clarification now because.
Yes, it was prepared by legal, but I believe it was done with cooperation from the Controller's Office and should be exhaustive.
Page 140. Where's the numbers? Just these here?
Additional questions? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
So I, I, I'm following up on the request that I had about separate accounting for the creed funds within the general fund. I mean, most accounting systems do allow for subaccounting, but from the responses that we received in our packet addendum and via email yesterday, it seems like there will not be any subaccounting. It'll just be, you know, if there are big expenditures, then we'll come to council.
Well, let me, let, if Ms. Gilliland can speak to the actual mechanics of the, how the accounting system works. So Cheryl, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Did you understand?
Yes, we can easily track all of the expenditures within the general fund where the funds will be placed or is placed without creating a new fund. It's, it'll be quite simple to track that, and we can give you, we can run reports and show you exactly what has been spent as we go along.
Okay, and just thank you for that. Just to follow up, can we, so there's a lot of mention in, in the meeting tonight and in previous meetings as well about, oh, there's a report on that. It's on the Be Clear Portal, or it's in this and that system, et cetera. Those are not that easy to use and are not evident to council members to check. So what I would prefer is an actual report every time, you know, like a biannual or quarterly report of when, how the funds are spent. Can we get that?
Yes, yes, we can provide that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Sandberg.
Yes, well, tonight we are being asked to allocate a portion of this to the new tech center. If the remainder of the TIF that's been rolled into the general fund now, is it fair for us to ask if the administration has other plans for those dollars that we might know about? Or is that just, you know, as it comes, as somebody makes a proposal, oh, we want to use it for this, that, or the other thing? Will it come to us at that point? Or is there some plan for where this dissolved TIF money, not TIF, creed money?
Right.
Is going to be earmarked for?
As it stands right now, I'm not aware of any specific use that's been earmarked or that were, for which the money has been earmarked. I think it would sit there and we would evaluate future proposals in the same way that we would have, that we did this one.
Okay, thank you.
And bring them to you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Additional questions? If not, I'll take a turn. Okay. This question is for Ms. Gilliland. It's going to sound suspiciously like the question I've already asked you, and that's because it is. I want to follow up on something you just said in response to Councilmember Sandberg and Councilmember Piedmont Smith. You said that you can certainly indicate what funds have been spent on that are coming out of the general fund, and I understand that. What I'm asking you is can you also tell us the source of those funds? Can you, and if I understood your answer previously, you said that you could tell us for a given expenditure, X number of dollars came from former creed funds and X number of dollars came from elsewhere in the general fund. Am I, is that a correct understanding? Can you differentiate between sources of money within the general fund or no?
Yes, we can differentiate between sources of money.
So if you come to us with project XYZ, you can tell us that we would like to appropriate 1 million from the former creed dollars for this and X amount from elsewhere in the general fund. You can tell us that?
Yes, we will be able to tell you that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Additional questions? Seeing none, let's go to public comment before we come back to, oh, oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Sims.
I don't know if it's a question or comment, but everything we've heard, so moving forward, for every appropriations ordinance that's using TIF funds, there will be a report accompanying that request with remaining funds, where the resources came from and the expenditures. Is that what I'm hearing moving forward? Because we were asking about tracking.
With the question that we're talking about creed funds, right?
Well, creed, yes, yes. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be prudent for any future use certainly to say, okay, here's the balance, right? Here's the balance, here's what we want to spend it on, and therefore here's the net remaining balance. And I, you know, I think, and then as we did in this most recent appropriation ordinance, even summarizing maybe the history from this moment, you know, to the, through the future allocations of those monies. So I think that it would be a good policy, I think, for people to do that. And for the council, it might be easier to understand where, how you're spending down that amount.
Okay, I agree. We know the amount, we know what's being requested, we know what's going to be remaining. We've heard it can be tracked. I've heard Ms. Gilliland say we can even do some itemized stuff. I think it would have been really nice, I agree with some of my colleagues, we'd have had all this before, but I don't know how we would have known that. But the point I'm trying to make is moving forward, we won't do these steps that we're doing now to get us into all this stuff moving forward. And that's something that we can do. And is that what I've heard we can agree to and expect moving forward?
Yes.
Between you and the controller.
I would also point out that this is, this is kind of a, it's an interesting moment because every, what the history is, is very different because it's been sort of untethered from the creed district. So what's, what the future process and policy can really, I think, do that clearly. And again, we can, we did it retroactively on the creed districts through the ordinance whereas clauses. But this is an interesting moment that allows us to kind of make that part of the process moving forward.
Okay, and I think we could have avoided, once that fund expires, then the rules change a little bit on uses.
Right, right.
Well, we didn't know that. See, those are the type of things I think that'll stop a bunch of misunderstandings moving forward.
Yeah.
So if that could be reported and say, you know, while it's in force, we do this, but now it's expired, that broadens it or whatever. And make, and make sure we know that when we've been asked to approve funds that goes against maybe some of our previous thinking, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Some of us. So that's, that's all I'm asking. So thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to public comment now. While Mr. Lucas extends the invitation on Zoom, let's see a show of hands in chambers of who would like to order or offer a public comment. I'm seeing one. Mr. Lucas?
Yes, if there are members of the public that would like to comment on this appropriation ordinance, please let us know by raising your hand in Zoom. You can do that by clicking on the reactions tab or the more tab in your control bar. You can also send the meeting host a chat to let us know you'd like to speak.
Okay, welcome. Let's start here in chambers. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Jen Pearl, and I'm the president of Bloomington Economic Development Corporation. We're a co-applicant with the state of Bloomington through the U.S. Department of Technology and the Tech Center. I just wanted to underscore the overall importance of this project. This project is a team piece. We're only a 20-person group. The Tech Center is diversified on employment base, builders, and agency of our local economy. Our national and local economies have shifted significantly over time with major local employers that have come and gone. The pandemic hit many of our existing industries hard. This is a really unique time in our community. National and statewide opportunities include U.S. Chips and Science Act and Indiana Ready. These can help us grow as that hub on the innovation corridor between Indianapolis and the state of U.C. We have new leadership at IU, upcoming local elections, and if done right, this is a rare opportunity to launch ourselves into a strong future. I wanted to mention and add that this investment of funds can have a significant impact, not only on the Trades District in Bloomington, but the region beyond this area. So it can have a much larger impact beyond where we're sitting here. This is about building an employment and innovation ecosystem to serve our laborers now and into the future. The BEDC requests your support for this appropriation, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Pearl. Mr. Lucas, anyone on Zoom?
Not that I see, no.
If you would sign in, please, and share your name for the record.
Good evening, council. This is Christopher MG from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I just want to reiterate a few of the points that Eric Spoonmore, the president and CEO of the chamber, said last week. We do support using creed funds for this project. This is an investment in the Trades District for a tech center. And right now, the tech center is the mill in a parking garage, and I think it needs this investment to sort of push this district to where I think it should be. I also want to say I appreciate the due diligence of this council on tracking these funds. I think they are important, that we use them for these sort of economic development projects that will end up benefiting the creed district and using some of the other funds for specific projects within that district. So we can do sort of both in this, and it's going to take due diligence moving forward that those funds are used for appropriate projects. But this, I believe, the tech center is an appropriate project for creed funds, and I thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. MG. Additional comments here in chambers? Or Mr. Lucas, anyone on Zoom? Okay. Seeing none, let's come back to council then for additional questions or for comment. Councilmember Volan.
I think everyone understands the complaint that I have. It says District 6 on it. I've always understood District 6 to include, as long as I've been this representative, it's included the entire meter zone, which is duplicated by the creed map. We all know that it's the downtown creed. We all know that it's about downtown. It was supposed to be about downtown. Thanks to Mr. Flaherty, I've, you know, I did not catch this, this part in the BIDAC resolution where they dissolve themselves, where they rattle off the money spent from the creed. It was just a handful of things. The biggest one was 4.77 million in 2005 to '08 for Cook Pharmica, to incentivize Cook Pharmica. They did a pretty good job of creating jobs with that money. Great. And it was in, actually, it wasn't, that's in the Thompson creed. So that doesn't, I mean, that's, there's, if there's $17 million together in the two, then that money came from the Thompson creed. Renovation of Fountain Square Mall, $736,000. The Indiana Enterprise Center for demolition of the old RCA building, 1.95 million. That was in 2001, three and four. And then the rest is a couple of things, $100,000, $3,000, nothing past 2012. So during the entire Hampton administration, there's been no effort to spend money for the intended purpose of this fund. And conveniently, it expires 2018, 2019? Well, state law says you could just move it to the general fund. Well, we couldn't think of anything else to spend it on. I mean, I'm pretty sure that, I'm not the only person here who has ideas about how we could spend that money. And I have floated the idea in the recent weeks of a downtown circulator, which I'm planning to bring as a resolution so that we can deliberate on it as though it were in appropriation. And I learned now that actually there may be a way in which we can initiate an appropriation ordinance under statute, something I'd never known before now inquiring into this. But the bottom line is, there were feeble efforts made over two administrations to use this money for its intended purpose. We spent some of it. There's still $10 million left. I wouldn't be complaining here if the administration hadn't brought a request for creed money to build the police station. At the last minute, the mayor took that potential off the table that they were going to solicit creed funds in order to finish the police station. But it's a lot of things, it's a lot of important things, but public safety is not economic development, not in the, I mean, there were, these are funds specifically for economic development. And for 20 years, I've been idly wondering about it, and I should have been more attentive because this is exactly the outcome that I worried about, that the administration is rope-a-doping us. They're putting the money into the general fund, they're daring us to keep track of it. Yes, they're gonna, they're gonna track it, but I mean, why not keep it in the fund? Why close the fund? Why not keep it in a separate fund? So that everybody, anybody can see that Fund 439, or whatever the number was, that's where that money was. Because the mayor said in his memo, which I can pull up, I've got so many screens open right now, I can barely find anything. "We do not feel it prudent further to restrict the use of those funds beyond state requirements," particularly when council will already be able to see and approve their appropriation. But look how difficult it was for us to remember, there's a reason that there's no creed report because it would have been empty for year after year. Basically, the last substantial expenditure from the creed was made before 2010. So why would there be a report? Well, so the administration is waiting us out, and now it's up to us to remember that that money is still there and what it should be used for. This is not, does not build confidence in the administration. But then I'm used to that I asked questions on April 4th, reasonable questions. Had there been somebody in the room to answer them from the Controller's Office, some of this might have been avoided. I would have been able to vote for this project last week. But instead, the mayor comes in early to report, doesn't even get the idea that you're supposed to wait until the item on the agenda is there. He's supposed to speak to it then. I guess it's not convenient for him because he's not here. And he leaves it to other people, including Mr. Crowley, who shouldn't have to answer for the mayor, and Ms. Gilliland, who isn't, not equipped to answer the questions, the reasonable questions that I had. The Trades District garage, the selling point for it, the reason I voted for a parking garage, because I'm not a big fan. But I voted for it because it makes sense if the entire Trades District gets built out. You don't want structured parking to, it's going to cost more to put structured parking in. in each building than to put it in one building. But one, another thing I'd like to see when we're doing accounting is, how much park, how much has parking been used, and how much are we paying to carry the cost of the trades district while we're waiting for the trades district to get built out? And yes, the TACES deal fell through, but now we're having to build a building in order to attract business. Is there going to be other business coming? I believe there will be, but there's a cost to carrying that garage. Did it have to be built when it was built? Could it have waited a couple of years? Could we have saved taxpayer money in the short term? Well, I guess we're never going to find that out. So I'm a little pissed. I think it's pretty clear. I support this project. I think it's a good idea. But like with the time when Cook came to us asking for payment in lieu of taxes, after we know they're involved with annexation, I couldn't vote for them, and I couldn't vote against it, and so I abstained. I'm going to abstain tonight because I agree with the purposes of it, but I do not agree in any way with the cavalier way that the mayor, and I'll put it squarely on his shoulders, thinks about this money, and the way that he's instructed his staff to respond to questions. I am used to getting answers from the administration less than 48 hours, sometimes the afternoon of a meeting where we asked for it a week ago. And I hope that any future administration is more responsive, because we have it in our power to continue to postpone things if we don't get information. It's not enough for me tonight to ask that the, my colleagues put this on hold, but the administration deserves it. We shouldn't have to beg for information. We shouldn't have to be told, well, we can get that for you, but we need to decide this now. So I guess you could say I'm angry about it. So I'm going to abstain rather than delay it any further. I would love to hear some feedback from my colleagues about their opinions about how they get information from the administration. But at some point, this has to end. And if we don't put our foot, our feet down and say, you've got to give us information before we vote, then it never will, and they're going to keep rope-a-doping us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith and Councilmember Rollins?
Yes, I would like to thank Mr. East and Mr. Fernandez for the details in their proposal and just kind of bring us back to the project at hand. So I am excited about this project. I think that, you know, after a long delay, this, this building will finally really activate the trades district. I'm very confident in the leadership moving forward, and I'm particularly pleased with the sustainable building design that has been proposed with the large windows, the photo, the photovoltaic display, you know, for solar energy, the green roof, the low emitting materials, all leading up to a LEED certification, silver or better. I do wish it would be a little bit taller. I think for this, this position in the city, this location, a taller building would have been preferred, but I understand the financial constraints there. So I'm very much in support of the building. I will be voting yes on this appropriation. I do share some of the concerns expressed by my colleagues about the creed funds, in particular, the fact that they were not used while the creed district existed to the degree that they could have been. I do understand that it was actually under the Hamilton administration that we last used creed funds for envisage, so that I think was a little unclear with my colleague's statement. But yeah, I think that there were missed opportunities, and there could have been more proactive leadership in using these funds earlier, so that is disappointing. And also, just, I would have preferred a separate fund be created with specific oversight legally, but I understand that the state legislature or the state code says that the funds have to be in the general fund after the expiration of the district. So I just want to keep an eye on them and make sure that we come forward with good projects, either from council members or from the mayor's administration, or from people in the community businesses, or other entities, because we have this money, we should use it to leverage other resources and develop our, our local economy and, and community as a whole. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rollins and Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. I have a great deal of sympathy for Councilmember Volin's position, and I know he's spoken about this quite a bit in terms of its use within the, within the area that it was derived. That was his expectation, he had every right to expect that. I also have sympathy regarding specifically the use of this fund or various funds. For instance, the commitment to the creed dollars for the showers purchase and renovation, that commitment was withdrawn at the last minute, which put a lot of questions in my mind as to how there would be adequate funds for the purpose of renovation. I understand now, my understanding now, is that there are not adequate funds for the needs of public safety for the west side of showers, and the administration is struggling to find those funds or to not fully renovate the west side of the showers for the purpose that it aimed, which is for the needs of public safety, very important purpose. So there's a general tendency to obscure, obfuscate information, financial information, when it is our responsibility to oversee these decisions, make decisions, make the best decisions on behalf of the community. So I take umbrage with that, and I agree with Councilmember Volin. And so I'm in a difficult position because I agree on the purpose and the project. I think it's good. So I'm, again, in a dilemma where I would like to support it, but I'm, I'm feeling non-cooperative right now, once again, with the, the way the administration essentially approaches the council regarding appropriations like this. So I'll consider my colleagues' comments now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty then Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. I wanted to echo the statements of Councilmember Piedmont Smith. Thank you very much to Mr. Fernandez, Mr. East, for all the work that's gone into this and other partners, like the BEDC and city staff, of course. I'm happy to support the project. I think this is a reasonable use of funds that were collected for economic development That's not to say I don't have some sympathy with and share some of the views expressed by other colleagues about tracking money and transparency, but specifically, the money that was in the creed districts has been transferred to the general fund, that ship has sailed. We can't change that with a vote now, one way or the other. I also note that I don't think there would be anything prohibiting the establishment of a new fund and an inter-fund transfer from the general fund to that fund of the amount remaining that came from creed, the creed funds, the IDF, I think was the actual fund name, but from the creed districts after this appropriation is made, assuming it is made, specifically with respect to the downtown creed, which has been the focus of Councilmember Volin's ire and, and sort of interest over time. If that list in the resolution before BIDEC was exhaustive, it looks like just shy of $800,000 is all that was expended in, from the, in the downtown creed district, meaning that about 10.8 million was what remains, since there's also several million, more than several million remaining from the Thompson Creed district, one could, if they wanted to, for instance, my colleague, Mr. Volin, could think of the 3.5 that's being appropriated now as coming exclusively from Thompson Creed, what were Thompson Creed dollars, and could think of the 10.8 remaining from the downtown creed district as yet to be utilized. He could, for instance, demand that all 10.8 million go to economic revitalization projects in the confines of the downtown creed district or immediately adjacent to it. That's up to us ultimately on future appropriations to decide what we support and what we don't. I don't think our power to do so is at all diminished by supporting this appropriation tonight. So I take some of those points to heart. I think, you know, if the council collectively comes behind ideas for those funds, whether the circulator idea that Councilmember Volin has circulated, sorry, the pun, in the past, or other ideas, you know, we can request an appropriation at that front, and it'll be the normal situation of we can't originate appropriations, at least I don't think, but, you know, depending on collaboration with the mayor to bring, to bring those in the future. So for all those reasons, you know, I'm happy to support the appropriation ordinance tonight, and also interested in following up on, on some of the related details of what were funds collected for the creed districts in the days and months to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Sandberg?
Thank you. I just want to thank Mr. East and Mr. Fernandez for bringing this along, getting us going. It's really a great project, and my colleagues have some, you know, good points about the issues with the city bringing forth the funds and telling us more, being kind of more transparent and making it easier for us to make decisions. But, you know, it doesn't override how good of a project this is and all the important things it's going to do for the future. So I thank you for that, and I think that, you know, we have some work to do with kind of working with the administration on other things, but I'm going to support the projects because it's a great project, and I thank you both for doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg?
Well, I want to take nothing away from this project. It's fabulous. I support it 100%. I know Mr. Fernandez and Mr. East are going to do a fabulous job in the development of the trades district, and this tech center is worthy of our support. So that's a yes vote. And the BEDC and the Chamber of Commerce are in agreement that these are good use, uses for the creed dollars. But I, I do want to bring up another issue of transparency, and one that I'm going to be expecting some good reporting on and some good answers to. And I thank Councilmember Volin for bringing up the fact that when the $34 million that were earmarked that was the bucket for public safety was determined to be used for the purchase of the back of this showers building for the police department, that 34 million was to have gone to both police and fire, and 14.5 was earmarked for the development of the police station back here, which I voted no on. I still oppose that idea. And then the rest was to have gone for fire improvements, renovations, various things. And when it was suggested at that time that that wasn't going to be enough to get the job done, that we may need to borrow for some creed dollars for that, I think it met with some objection for those of us that felt that money should have been earmarked for the downtown revitalization and a variety of projects that we could have used for that. So what I'm going to be looking at very closely going forward is what is being designed for the rest of the creed dollars, that now it's the understanding from reading that memo, that it's not going to be carved out for downtown, it can be used for anything that the administration wants to use it for, and obviously with our okay or permission. But what begs the question for me is, you know, the obscurity that you're talking about and the, the lack of fiscal transparency until things are announced practically in a press release. So I really want to know a study and a detailed fiscal analysis of the showers purchase, how the BPD is going to be put back there. I understand we're on the second architect that was finally brought on board to do the, the architectural designs. But I want more information about how this is going to happen and what kind of funding is going to be used. And, you know, when you don't get transparency from the administration, you hear the rumors, and what I'm hearing is that we may be, you know, quite a few million dollars short of being able to do justice back here to the Bloomington Police Department. And so that's the next, I'll just put you on notice now, that I want to hear a lot more details about the progress for the Bloomington Police Department, and will our lack of having enough to do what we said we were going to do, will that impact fire? Will they then get at the short end of the stick of not being able to get what they need to renovate Station 1 and the various other improvements that they needed? And that $34 million from the ED lit that we had specifically earmarked for police and fire, that that's going to be used wisely and in the best interests of the police and the fire and the public? Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Thank you. This is brief. I support this project this week as I did last week. Thank you for everyone involved in this. I will say I can empathize with Councilmember Volin on this one, that there are times that we feel like the process is flawed from the beginning, and so it's really hard to get on board with something like this. Just to digress, it reminds me of a 2020 project brought by Public Works to repave College Mall Road, and in our transportation plan, we were supposed to have bike lanes painted on that road, but we were told the road was too narrow. That was, I think, a two-night, two council meeting debate with many, many hours. We lost that, we lost that debate on bike lanes, but really now there are actually bike lanes painted on that road, so I don't know how that happened, but I think the debate was helpful. I would like to take just a minute, too, to talk about the trades district. I think this building is very exciting to activate that space and get more folks up in that part of the city. I also just want to mention that trades, to me, is also a lot more than just tech, and I know that the mill offers a lot of options for folks in there, in a space to do other things. But I'm also interested in bringing, you know, like trades back to downtown and giving spaces and potentially subsidies for folks who are artists and makers and, like, building trades and, and people who repair, like, leather and wood and metal products. So I would love to also see spaces in the trades district for, I guess, the classic trades. Thank you.
Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. I too want to thank everyone for their presentation, and also my colleague, Councilmember Volin, for bringing some things up that I think is of interest and importance. How could we ever, ever disagree with my colleague on anything? However, I think there were some very, very good points that he brought up, and I think we've talked about them and hopefully alleviated them going in the future. I think there'll be more discussion, as my other council, or colleague down, down aisle, Councilmember Sandberg said, because we just don't have a feeling in many cases, I've got to be careful, because I don't want to say truthful. I think things are truthful. Transparent, I guess, is the word, and I want to avoid that. And I think it's also been clarified that once the district expired, then the rules changed, and we didn't know that. So I'm going to support what we're, what's being asked tonight, and since the rules have changed and we had so many discussions, maybe we could talk with someone else and turn some of these funds into substantial amount of dollars for sidewalk repair. Now, how many people would dislike me if I make that suggestion? I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Volin?
Is there anyone? First round? Okay. Just to be clear, the primary issue for me isn't the worthiness of the project. I think that the gentlemen presenting the project, you know, have heard that plenty. It isn't the lack of fiscal transparency from the administration, it's the lack of decisional transparency. They could have chosen to fund it through the TIF. And why didn't they want to use the TIF? They said it's for Hopewell. Well, how much does Hopewell cost? We don't know. We just want to save all the money for Hopewell. The master plan for Hopewell, as a reason for not using the TIF, did not come to the council. It's an area the size of any other overlay that's in the comprehensive plan, which we had to vote on when the UDO was adopted. But somehow, Hopewell doesn't count. Somehow, under former Deputy Mayor Mick Ronison, this was something that was entirely the domain of the executive. Okay, fine, well, that's not exactly transparent for us in order to be able to decide why the creed and not the TIF. Okay? And also, if they didn't want to go through this, then they should have gone for TIF money, because then they all had to do was go through the RDC. They've gone through the RDC for millions of dollars of other things. They could have done it for this, too. So I wonder if the creed- So I wonder if the Creed can be reimbursed by the TIF. Yes, I know the fund doesn't exist anymore. Yes, I know it's moved, but that $3 million should be coming from the TIF. The TIF is the same similar as the Creed. It's a tax increment financing. The Creed was just specifically for downtown economic development or Thompson Economic Development. Why didn't the administration build the Trades Garage with Creed money? Why didn't they build the Forestry Garage with Creed money? They could have. I mean, they've been sitting on it for years, for a decade. Why sit on this chunk of change for so long? Councilmember Rosenbarger said the process being flawed from the beginning? Yes, it is. And we can change it. It's just that the administration is daring us to use, the only options we have are nuclear ones. We'd have to hold up the annual budget in order to get the attention of the administration. And I know that it's not something that any of us want to do. It's a quease inducing prospect, but what other choice do we have? And if we're trying to get information in a timely fashion, for God's sake, at least 48 hours before the meeting, so like that like we have to do with public notice. Just one last thing, we spent $1.95 million to tear down the RCA Building. We had to pay to leave that site fallow for 12 years, let alone $2 million. You know, I just realized that there's a member of the RDC in the audience. I should have asked him to weigh in on this, but all this leaves me with more questions than answers. I'm very disappointed. And again, I appreciate very much the feedback my colleagues have given me. It hasn't changed my vote. I have to abstain. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional round two? If not, I'll finish up. Thank you to those who presented this idea. I think the idea is solid and I especially and I certainly share the concerns that my colleagues have all outlined. There's no need to outline those again. But I especially want to applaud the ways in which these dollars are leveraging outside dollars. And I especially want to acknowledge the work done for the EDA grant. So I'll be glad to support this project. So. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on appropriation ordinance 23-02?
Yes. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scandolory?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Abstain.
That passes 801. Thank you, everyone, and thank you to the presenters.
Madam President, I move that Resolution 2306 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it? Will the clerk please read?
Resolution 2306 to approve the Project 46 Southern Indiana Regional Climate Alliance. The synopsis is as follows. This resolution supports Bloomington's participation for at least a three-year initial timeframe in a regional climate action coalition involving Bartholomew, Brown, and Monroe Counties with goals including tracking greenhouse gas emissions locally and regionally, reporting annually to the community, and seeking appropriate annual funding through public, private, and philanthropic sources.
Madam President, I move that Resolution 2306 be adopted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have additional presentation, please? Or no, first presentation? I'm sorry, this first we've seen this.
Well, Alex Riley, Economic Sustainable Development, I'll just echo a little bit of what the mayor said and wanted to just underscore certain points. So what's in front of you is a resolution and it we would be the first of a coalition of entities to advance this resolution. So I believe we, you know, all agree and feel strongly about the challenges that are facing us related to climate. The basic premise of this is to bring together multiple communities, Bloomington, Columbus, Nashville, and the counties that they reside in, and possibly other entities as as they may want to join. So for example, if Ellettsville as an incorporated entity would want to join, welcome them into the into the into the mix. As the mayor said, action, successful climate action has to involve more than just government. It has to involve the private sector. So it should be cross-sectoral. It should be bipartisan. It should be multi-generational. So we want to make sure that we that we include people of the next generation into the efforts. And so the idea here is to really lay the groundwork for this collaboration between all of these different entities and their respective private sector and nonprofits in order to work together. And we believe one of the benefits, and not an insignificant one, would be that it would create kind of a critical mass that we as as an individual city may not have to the same degree to attract federal funding, which, as you all know, is pretty substantial for the next handful of years, and and certainly use any kind of local governmental funding that that each of the approving communities would put forward, to have that matched locally from private sector, but then cumulatively to really try to to draw down that that kind of federal funding that we think is is more likely to happen the bigger the footprint that we're that we're presenting. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I don't know if that helps clarify a little bit, but happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Crowley? Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. In the memo, we're talking about cost outlay from each entity, 50 cent per capita. First of all, what entities are we talking about? Just Bloomington? Is it county, city?
So there would actually be six.
In the three counties that we're talking.
Six and potentially seven, you know, six for starters. So Bloomington itself.
Yes.
Monroe County, the Nashville and Brown County, Columbus and Bartholomew County. So those would be the six entities, assuming they all approve this resolution.
So Monroe County government has committed to this?
We have presented it to them. They are looking at it. They haven't committed to it yet.
Okay. Let's just look at Bloomington. Based on this 50 cent per capita, how much is our anticipated contribution?
So it's about $42,500 annually.
Okay. And it also says that we'll cover this from your budget, your 2023 budget this year.
Yeah, so we have a line in the, it's actually a line, so you may not recall this, but there is a line in the Economic Development Local Income Tax Budget that was dealing with climate economy in that there were several items that we had forecasted would be targeted for for funding and we anticipated this being one of them. So that money that we were requesting for 2023 would align with that original budget projection.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Councilmember Volin?
You say six or seven entities?
Well, it's, you know, the the three cities and the three counties that surround them.
Is there anybody else?
So six to start. Well, we were, we've discussed, you know, Ellettsville.
Oh.
Which actually is incorporated. So, you know, that could be a seventh entity. If they were interested, we haven't spoken with them.
Does Monroe County pay 50 cents for every resident of the county or just people who are not in a consolidated city?
It would be outside of the city, so it wouldn't be duplicated with the city.
So the counties don't duplicate the consolidated town.
Yeah, you sort of negate, you know.
Yeah, okay.
Remove the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Seeing none, let's go to public comment. Are those in chamber or is there anyone in chambers who would like to offer comment? If you could raise your hand while Mr. Lucas, could you extend our invitation on Zoom, please?
Yes, of course. If there are members of the public on Zoom that would like to speak to this item, please let us know by using the raise hand feature in your control bar. You can find that by clicking the reactions button or the more button. You can also send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak.
I'm not seeing any raised hands here in chambers. Mr. Lucas, are you seeing any raised hands on Zoom?
I am not, no.
Okay. In which case, let's come back to council for additional questions or for comment. Councilmember Piedmont Smith and Councilmember Flaherty?
Yeah, I think this is a great first step for regional cooperation in climate action. And I was actually in Nashville with the mayor and when he and Mayor Lenup from Columbus and Town Manager Sandy Jones from Nashville all kind of officially launched the project on March 24th. And it was fitting because the official who kicked off the proceedings, Anna Hofstadter from the Town Council of Nashville, pointed out that that day the schools were actually closed in Nashville because of flooding. So we see the effects of climate change and we see them much more frequently, you know, with frequent flooding and heat and other impacts here locally. And so we see the urgency with which we need to address these issues. And this is a great way to share best practices. We have, you know, the Climate Action Plan in place. We've done a lot here in Bloomington, but some of our private sector entities could learn a lot from the businesses in Columbus such as Cummins that have done a lot in the realm of sustainability. And, you know, the smaller community of Nashville, Brown County can kind of tag along and use some of the resources that we've developed as far as measuring greenhouse gas reduction, hopefully reduction, and some other best practices. So I think it's it's a win-win situation and hopefully it's the start of, you know, bigger coalition, just like Mr. Crowley mentioned, with the private sector and nonprofit sector as well. So I'm very much in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Flaherty?
Thank you. Similar comments to my colleague. Just I think this is, there's a lot of opportunity here for knowledge sharing and setting collective goals across multiple units of government as well as sharing among nonprofit, private sector institutional actors and sharing in the ambition with with large entities like IU, for instance, in in setting targets and and working to achieve them. Also wanted to recognize the work of Lauren Clemens, who's of course no longer with the City of Bloomington and has moved on to a different position, but I know put a lot of work into the initial regional climate convening and some of the groundwork that led to this being developed, of course, along with current city staff and EST. So finally, just a note that, yeah, I think this is a really great tool to help leverage some of the bipartisan infrastructure law and Inflation Reduction Act opportunities that are available and some of which are not yet available but will be soon. So I appreciate that we've got some avenues through which to to leverage those funds collectively in a regional setting and I'll be happy to support tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg?
Well, yes, I agree. This is a good first step and I'm looking forward to, once the coalition is built, to see what concrete steps are are next. Someone who has attended the Lake Monroe Watershed Summit, I really do feel the need that we have regional partnerships with these climate issues and these critical issues before us with with everything that we can do much better when we have county cooperation than if we're trying to go it alone. So again, kudos and looking forward to hearing more details about where the various funding is going to be going toward and how it can be leveraged for other federal and state funding opportunities. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Sims?
Thank you. I also agree with my colleagues that this is a great first step. During my two terms of service, one of the things with regard to sustainability and climate change, one of the things that we've maintained and many of my colleagues have as well is a collaboration in a more regional approach. It just didn't make a lot of sense to me for Bloomington itself to do all the things that we've been doing and but it don't go outside of our city borders. So, yeah, we could have some a much better air quality, much, we can do that. But is it worth anything when we're not doing it on a regional basis to broaden that and we still got cars coming in and out and, you know, transportation and all those things? So I think we are sometimes quick and necessarily so to criticize administration in many things and, you know, let's just face it, some of them are well deserved. But but I also think it's it's pretty cool when we can applaud something that I think we've been talking about over the over time, and this is one of them. So I too am looking forward to next steps and it's just more enthusiasm, I think, all the way around because you're not doing things in a vacuum or in a silo. And I'd like to see it even broaden even more. I'd like to get some of our neighbors to the, I guess that'd be west and south and, you know, and involved so we can have a bigger impact. So I will support this and thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Volin?
Just want to say I agree with my colleagues, but Councilmember Sims really crystallized the why this project is good and everything he said is, I agree with. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional final comments? Councilmember Rosenbarger?
I think this is very exciting. I agree with everything that has been said and similar to what Councilmember Sims was saying, I think a lot of folks in Bloomington sometimes say this isn't a problem we can solve on our own. And I actually think it's a both and, a both and solution. So now we get to work regionally along with doing work in our own city. Thanks.
Thank you. Additional comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Resolution 23-06?
Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Scandolory?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Volin?
Yes.
And Flaherty?
Yes.
That passes 90. Thank you, everyone. And that takes us to legislation for first readings.
Madam Presidents, I move that Ordinance 2304 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Will the clerk please read?
Ordinance 2304 to amend Title 20 of the Bloomington Municipal Code Regarding Technical Corrections Set forth in BMC 20. The synopsis is as follows. This petition contains corrections or clarifications in the UDO. These errors range from missing references to terminology correction to missing text to sinking references across the UDO. There are 19 amendments identified, some appearing multiple times in code.
Thank you. And let's plan to take that up next at our regular session on April 19? 19.
Madam Presidents, I move that Ordinance 2305 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
The ayes have it? Madam Clerk, will you please read?
Ordinance 2305 to amend Title 20, Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code Regarding Amendments and Updates Set forth in BMC 20.03, 20.05, and 20.07. The synopsis is as follows. This petition contains amendments related to use regulations in Chapter 3, subdivision standards in Chapter 5, and divisions definitions, sorry, in Chapter 7 of the UDO. There are 61 amendments identified.
Thank you.
Madam Presidents, I move that Ordinance 2306 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
That would be great after I refer that to the regular session on the 19th. Did you wish to second the motion introduced?
Yes, I would second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the motion to introduce Ordinance 2306, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
The ayes have it? Madam Clerk, will you please read?
Yes, just a quick clarification. Did you refer 2305 to the next regular session or did you, were you doing that later?
Very briefly, yes, I did.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure I caught it. Okay, Ordinance 2306 to amend Title 20 Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code Regarding Amendments and Updates Set forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 20.04. The synopsis is as follows. This petition contains amendments in Chapter 4 related to design requirements for uses in the UDO. There are 55 amendments identified.
Thank you. Let's plan to take that up next at our regular session on April 19.
Madam President, I move that Ordinance 2307 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed?
Nay.
The ayes have it. Madam Clerk, will you please read?
Ordinance 2307 to amend Title 20 of the Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding amendments and updates set forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 20.06. The synopsis is as follows. This petition contains amendments in Chapter 6 related to processes and procedures in the UDO. There are 21 amendments identified.
Thank you. And let's plan to take that up as well at our next regular session on April 19th. Councilmember Volin?
I move that the three most recently introduced ordinances be referred to the second reading on May 3 instead of April 19th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty. Councilmember Volin, please go.
All I know is that the last time we talked about UDO changes, we had 25 hours of meetings over six days over two weeks. It was one of the most controversial things we've ever had, an extremely toxic discussion. I am dreading the possibility that, and I noticed I did not recommend the technical amendments. I feel that those can be disposed of readily. But the other ones, I'm just astonished that we would be taking these up before the primary, let alone, I mean, how much time we're going to need to dispose of these, I can't even imagine. That's why I'm making the motion. I just wanted people to know why. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? Councilmember Flaherty?
While I have not dug in at a deep substantive level yet with respect to these ordinances, I will note that the Plan Commission recommended all of them unanimously, and I wanted to invite perhaps my colleague, Councilmember Smith, who is the council's appointment to the Plan Commission, to weigh in with respect to whether he feels that these are controversial ordinances that might be far in excess of what we could hope to get through in our meeting next Wednesday. Thanks.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Flaherty, for pointing that out and asking me to comment. None of them were controversial in the least. The only one that, you know, brought forth some more discussion again was the parking maximums. Everything else was kind of verbiage and a few changes to tables to reflect some of the corrections in the text. And so, yeah, most of it was just pretty technical corrections to a lot of things. And the only thing that really, you know, had discussion was the parking maximums. Yeah.
Councilmember Volin?
Why then is the first ordinance of the four introduced tonight labeled "technical corrections"? Because my reading of "technical correction" is a typo's here or word choices there, that's a technical correction. You're talking about minor changes to the UDO that, okay.
Yeah, the rest of them were very minor.
How long did the parking maximum discussion go?
Oh, that was probably, the parking maximum discussion probably went on for 10, 15 minutes. But it was not heavily debated that much. Yes, Mr. Lucas?
I just wanted to ask, in case it's helpful, did that proposal make it into these four ordinances? It was my understanding that there may be an additional proposal coming out of the Plan Commission, at least according to Director Robinson, related to parking maximums in the future. So I just wondered if that part of the discussion made it into these proposals?
I believe the answer is yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Volin?
If what Councilmember Smith is the case, and I appreciate his feedback on it, I will withdraw my motion. Thank you.
Thank you. That motion is withdrawn, and Ordinance 2305, 2306, and 2307 will be taken up next at the regular session on April 19th. So that brings us to our second of two periods of public comment. Is there anyone here in chambers who would like to offer comment? Please approach the podium while Mr. Lucas extends our invitation on Zoom.
Yes, if any members of the public would like to speak, please let us know by using the raise hand feature in your control bar, by clicking the reactions tab or the more tab. You can also send a chat to the meeting host to let us know you'd like to speak.
Thank you. Let's start here in chambers. Welcome, if you would, please sign in.
I did.
Oh.
While you weren't looking.
While I wasn't looking. And then if you could confirm your name for the record, then you'll have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Dave. I'm sorry. My name is Dave Askins with the V Square Bulletin, and my question is, what happened to the motion to remove Greg Alexander from the Traffic Commission? It was postponed to this meeting. Under Robert's rules, I'm just going to read aloud a paragraph. When the appointed time has been reached for a postponed question being taken up, and as soon as no other business of a higher priority interferes, the chair states the question is pending. Therefore, no further motion is normally needed to bring the question before the assembly. However, if the chair fails to state the question at the correct time, any member may then demand that the postponed question be taken up as ordered by making a call for the orders of the day. So, I mean, making a call for the orders of the day is not something that you expect to hear somebody do at a Bloomington City Council meeting, so that's fine. But, you know, the expectation was that somebody would say a word or two about that motion, and in fact, the expectation was that there would be an up or down vote on the motion. And we got no explanation at all about what's happening. What's the status of that motion procedurally? Is it dead? Can it be brought back at any time? I mean, we're at this point now in mid-April, mostly because in January, when Mr. Alexander's appointment was in front of the council, no one wanted to talk about the question. It was evident that two councilmembers had a problem. Neither of them wanted to say anything, and no one on the council wanted to exercise their ability under Bloomington Municipal Code to challenge a colleague, to not abstain and explain why they're abstaining or else vote. That could have been done. This could have been handled long before now, and now it's still not handled. I'm sick of writing about this issue. So it would be great if somebody could use the time for council scheduling to talk about when this motion is scheduled, or if maybe it's just never going to be scheduled. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Askins. Mr. Volin?
Yes, I'd ask my colleague if he would withdraw the motion. Yes, I am.
Yes, I will withdraw the motion.
Thank you. May I ask one more question, Madam Chair? Does Mr. Rallo intend to bring back the motion, or can we retire it with prejudice?
Question has been asked. Mr. Rallo, do you wish to comment, or no?
I think we're at the end of our meeting.
We're at the very least at the end of public comment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Unless, Mr. Lucas, you see anyone on?
No, I don't see additional public comment.
In which case, let's take up matters of council schedule.
Yes, thank you. Just another reminder that the council has a scheduled budget advance coming up on April 25th. That is two weeks from yesterday, so I imagine there will be some communications ahead of that meeting. Oh, yes.
What time is that meeting?
I believe 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock, thank you. And it's here, obviously.
And that's all I wanted to mention.
Thank you very kindly. And do we not have an interview? We have an interview team meeting on Thursday, I believe, correct?
Yes.
Yes, so, Interview Team B.
I'd have to defer to the clerk's office, but I'm sure we can get you that confirmation.
Or you could defer to Interview Team B. So we'll confirm that. Nothing else for the good of the order, seeing no further business? We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Good night.[1728.61]